Roll call. Good evening, Mr. DiEmilio.
Present.
And Mrs. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
And Mr. Hyman is out of town here, will he not, here this evening? Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Garrity?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
And Mr. Connell's also out of town. And Mr. Aliva?
Here.
All right, let's have an opening prayer by Mary Jane Kirby from United Methodist Church.
Good night, thank you.
Let me go on.
Gracious God, we thank you for your blessings that have brought us together. We thank you so much for the work of our local government in action and pray for your guidance and direction that we may be guided by your wisdom and understanding in the things that we do. We care for one another, we respect one another. We pray that you will help this group and those that provide insight to make good decisions on behalf of this community and that honor and respect the relationships that we hold so dear. Guide and direct, and we thank you in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
The Temple of Jesus of the United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start with the Officer of the Year Award. Deputy Chief?
Ready?
Yeah, we are ready.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. This week, our nation honors law enforcement officers, especially those killed in the line of duty. Last year, 49,851 law enforcement officers were assaulted in the line of duty and another 292 officers lost their lives. This is also the time of the year we recognize one of our own police officers and acknowledge him for outstanding service to Haverford Township. And that his performance over the prior year was the highest standard of Haverford Township Police Department and the law enforcement profession. The Officer of the Year is presented yearly to the officer who has demonstrated diligent and faithful duty and valuable and extraordinary service performed consistently over the entire year. To receive this award, an officer must be nominated by a sergeant or higher rank and then must receive the majority vote of the 15 members of the supervisory and command staff of the police department. It is now my honor to present the 2015 Officer of the Year Award to Officer Joseph McGinnity. Officer Joe McGinnity has been with the Haverford Township Police Department since July of 2009. Before coming to Haverford, Joe was in the U.S. Army for eight years where he served two tours in Iraq. He then worked for two years as a University of Pennsylvania police officer. Joe lives in Haverford. He's here tonight with his wife Bonnie, his sons Colin, Brayden, and Carter, and his mother and father. Officer McGinnity has decided to the patrol division and has been very versatile in that position. He brings a positive attitude to work every day and is willing to help out any way necessary. Joe is nominated for this award the last two years, which is an indication of his consistency and excellent work ethic. Officer McGinnity has been credited with saving a life of a 22-month-old child who accidentally drowned in the family pool. Officer McGinnity successfully provided lifesaving techniques by administering CPR to save this child. So, Joe, congratulations. Thank you.
Great crowd.
Always an honor and a thrill to recognize our police officers. We're reminded of how difficult and dangerous their job is by what happened or occurred in Mississippi where two police officers were slain. They have a very dangerous job, and we're fortunate that they do that. But we're here to honor this officer. So I read the proclamation. "Whereas Officer Joseph McGinnity has performed diligently and faithfully to duties and services required of him by the township of Haverford, and whereas the performance of Officer Joseph McGinnity was in the highest standard of the law enforcement profession, and whereas a vote has been taken by the police department supervisory staff to recognize Officer Joseph McGinnity's outstanding contributions. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Officer Joseph McGinnity is hereby commended for his diligent and valuable service presented this 11th day of May 2015, Haverford Township Police Department by Chief Carbon Pettin, Chief of Police Department." Congratulations.
Joe, get your family up too.
You want to stand in front of me, Brayden? We can, you want to go over here? You want to go in front of the?
There's more room up there.
You want to stand right in front of me? Ladies and gentlemen, this is the officer's wife Bonnie and his children.
Cute.
All right, now we have the township auditor update.
A fact to follow. Good evening. I've reviewed the disbursements for the period beginning April 14th and ending May 11th. I raised several questions. All the questions were answered to my satisfaction, so in my opinion, there were no irregularities for the period in question. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. Thank you, Karen. Nice to see you back. Nice to have you back. We'll start with the citizens forum, 20 minutes registered speakers and 20 minutes on agenda items. We'll start with the registered speakers. And first one is Ann McLaughlin.
Right over here, dear. Just give your name and address. Ann McLaughlin. I live at 125 Upland Road in Haverford Town, and I'm here concerning the speed bumps that have been put in on our street. How long do I have? Three minutes.
Yeah, you have three minutes.
Okay. They were put in April 10th of 2014, and in June of 2014, I started emailing Mario regarding them. They're not in front of my house, there is one right next door to me. The people at either end of the block or in the middle do not put up with the thump and the vibration and so forth that we are putting up with, and it has gotten to be really, really bad. And I have a lot of concerns. One is, and I've researched this, that it slows down emergency vehicles. There's damage to homes, there's damage to pipes under the street, which are gas lines and water lines, damage to cars, and it also devalues the homes in the area. So, again, something, our street is a speedway, I'll have to admit that, something has to be done, but I don't know what we can do. In talking to Larry, everything I seem to mention was grandfathered in. We can't get a 15 mile per hour limit because of state regulation, whatever, then we'll have to go through Greg Vitale maybe to try, you know, to change that. However...
Good luck with that.
I guess my main concern is, I did not sign the original petition, I was not home or whatever, and I think a lot of people signed the petition thinking this is a great idea, however, not realizing the amount of inconvenience and vibration and so forth that is doing to the homes in the area, I think a lot of people have now changed their minds. Larry has come around, or...
Mario.
Yeah, yeah. Mario has come around for that second survey, I don't know if it's finished or not yet.
Not yet.
However, we got a letter from Larry in the mail saying that it's a done deal and they'll be put in at the end of spring, early summer. So I don't know, you know, what's happening.
I can clarify.
I am totally against it. We have a row of people here totally against it from one end of the block. Again, something has to be done, but the speed bumps are definitely, oh, can I just play something for you, is that okay?
Sure.
Just might take a few seconds. That's just one car. That's not a truck. That's a car. And it's constant. FedEx trucks, delivery trucks, lawn, or the lawn people going through it. It's awful, so. I'm used to school board meetings that go on until about 11:00, 11:30. I'm sure this one's going to go on too. Okay, thank you.
All right. Marlene Buck?
I'm going to deal with Upland Road.
Good evening. I am very opposed to the speed bumps on Upland Road. I have now lost the peace and quiet enjoyment of my home.
Name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 116 Upland Road. I can no longer watch television without turning it up. I can no longer sit on my porch without hearing thud, thud, thud constantly, and it's an enclosed porch. I must run my air conditioner all of the time. On a beautiful night like tonight, I cannot turn off my air conditioner or I will hear thud, thud, bump, bump all through the night. In addition to that, once the thud, thud bump stops, you hear the speeding of the car. So they go over the bump, they slow down, some people, not never a FedEx truck, and then they speed up. Sunday, I was trying to plant in front of my home, and I had to keep screaming at people loudly to slow down. It did nothing. I also like to know, did anyone do a real estate study to find out if the speed bumps would have an impact on my property value?
We'll answer your questions afterwards.
That's what I have, that's my question. You know my anger. You saw my anger.
Yeah, I've met with you a few times.
I do apologize for my anger.
No, that's okay.
But I just, if you hear this constantly, day in, it's just horrible, and I cannot sleep. So I'm always angry. I go to work angry every day because I don't sleep. I told my employer if I didn't come in tomorrow, because I got arrested.
We've seen a lot worse.
No, no, I'm actually very well behaved because I just had a sitter.
We've done a lot worse.
Okay.
No, you really want to go out of your...
Thank you for a minute, Larry.
Can we, can we?
You just want to go out, you want to run out of your home and just scream because it's just so irritating. So was there a real estate study done?
We'll answer your questions.
Oh, at the end, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Mike Levin, stormwater issues.
Mike Levin, 414 Mill Road. I passed out some sheets about stormwater issues, I have a few more for people who have come in late, and I am probably going to put some of this up on my website, and I'll inform you next time where. I have two points to bring up first concerning, I had requests concerning paving of either asphalt or concrete out at C-Rex Center and also along the path going to the YMCA on, from Manola Road up. These people feel that woodchips would be much nicer. I countered with the fact that, well, maybe it's a, maybe it's a, it's a disabled person who's walking on them, maybe there's some ordinance that says produce it for the handicapped. I'd like an answer. Second, there is no air quality monitoring that is accessible to the public at the YMCA. The EPA is handling that. EPA should either step down or the Y should make available quality, air quality studies by private parties. There are 23,000 people who use that, it's over a civil fund site. The studies that I've seen, both of gymnasia in Europe as well as pools, indicate that there are questions regarding this that need to be worked out. Now I want to bring up a point that's of interest to all of you. Today, I made a home call to my insurance agent regarding homeowners' insurance, and I said, "Why do we have this increase which is headed up toward $1,000?" Two reasons, he said. One of them is that we included an additional fee if you want a higher deductible or if you want a lower deductible, and secondly, even so, we feel that there are more storms and there is more climate change, and this is causing us to raise our rates. Now, let me turn to the stormwater issues in my community. This is going to affect all of you with homeowners' insurance. During a, I'm not going to read this to you in its entirety because you can read this yourself, but I hope to fill this in. There is a stormwater pipe that drains a small community known as Woodmere Park in our area. The inlets in that Woodmere Park community are, or have been sunken. They have been enlarged at this time.
Dr. Levin, you've used your three minutes.
Can I go on? I need to finish this. It's quite important.
Well, everybody, okay, I'm going to give you your citizens forum minutes, okay?
Thank you.
That's three minutes, but you have to wrap it up.
All right. The inlets are shrunken, the curves are shrunken as well, have collapsed, the soils are compacted, there are no grates, and the inlets are too narrow. A third paragraph. Two scenarios were offered for this as proposals. One was relamping the entire stormwater drainage system in the community, which is a procedure that I follow. The second one is, let's draw the water from another location along Mill Road and take it right down Mill Road at a cost of about $3 million, $1.5 million plus upgrades, which would be seasonal. Third point is the fact that there are no calculations in the report. Fourth observation is that a cursory review of other stormwater proposals totaled over $8 million. That's money that this township does not have. It is also true that a previously submitted FEMA application for a seriously neglected stormwater management problem in the community went to FEMA, and FEMA found, and I determined this from a letter that they wrote to the township rejecting it, was we had to turn this over to a consultant, we couldn't make head or tail out of it. And the consultant says, "It's no good." They turned it over to an outside consultant? What's the matter with the stormwater reports that are coming out of the community? And then finally, in Haverford as well as other Delaware County communities, planning departments have ceased to exist in favor of ad hoc planning. Bring in a consultant, have them come in for a short time, salute, and say, "That's all I can do for you," and get out. The township should have a planning department of its own, not a planning board. A planning board is settling arguments. A planning department will review the applicable material in a scientific fashion. Such an approach leaves planning to a planning board or commissioners that have little or no capability or interest in long-range planning. It solves the problem on the spot, if you can, but it is more orchestrated, it's more orchestrated by commissioners and their interests. Ultimately, it is in the long-range planning perspective that will determine the ultimate costs associated with development. Woodmere Park is one classic example of this. It is already changing from one-story brick homes to much larger homes on the same plot. That means more stormwater is going to be running off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Irene Coffey?
Good evening. My name is Irene Coffey. I live at 1437 Maryland Avenue in the First Ward. And I'm here tonight as vice president of the Haverford Township Historical Society to give you an update on our activities and events. The Haverford Township Historical Society is a nonprofit volunteer organization. We were established in 1939, celebrated our 75th anniversary last year, and we're the oldest such organization in the area. Our mission is to protect, preserve, and promote the history of our community and to sustain its cultural heritage through educational programs, accessible archives, and site preservation. As part of our work, the society has partnered with Haverford Township to care for and showcase three historic buildings owned by the township. Two of these, Nider Hall and the Federal School, are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Nider Hall was built about 1810 as the home of the powder master of the Nider Hall Powderworks. It was the working headquarters of a complex of early gunpowder manufacturing buildings that once stretched along Cobb's Creek. The Powderworks was in production in time for the War of 1812 and continued until about 1840. The Historical Society has furnished Nider Hall with period furniture, implements, and other artifacts. We maintain our historical archives and photograph and library collection there. The Lawrence Cabin, dating from about 1700, is preserved next to Nider Hall. This three-century-old log cabin comes from Haverford's earliest colonial days. It was saved and relocated when threatened with demolition a half-century ago. It's the oldest freestanding domestic building in Haverford Township. Finally, there's the 1797 Federal School, the one-room stone schoolhouse on Darby Road near Marple Road. It was the first schoolhouse built in Haverford Township, and it's truly a treasure. The Historical Society has long partnered with our Township School District to offer a living history program, which is comprised of two different initiatives. These are unique educational programs in that they are curricular school days and not just field trips. They serve approximately 1,000 4th and 5th grade township and some other students each year in 18 to 20 classes per grade. Every spring since 1991, all township 4th grade students spend a day experiencing a one-room schoolhouse at the Federal School. They sit on wooden benches, write on slates, memorize the presidents up to 1849, and lack lights, air conditioning, and screens, but they do have an outhouse. They leave with a better understanding of how children learned in old Haverford Township. Every autumn since 1973, we've conducted the Colonial Living Experience, where 5th graders spend an official school day learning about colonial times and lifestyles at Nider Hall and the Lawrence Cabin. The focus is on domestic chores such as hauling water, chopping wood, preparing meals, churning butter, and making soap and candles. For the adults and children of all ages, the Historical Society's annual Heritage Festival is scheduled for Sunday, June 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It is held along Caracan Drive. This annual free event is now in its ninth year and attracts thousands of people to learn about and celebrate our township's history and heritage. It features displays, vendors, historic reenactments, music, and food, as well as free tours of Nider Hall and the Lawrence Cabin. Finally, the Historical Society will again be holding open house days this year at Nider Hall. These occur on Sundays when Caracan Drive is closed to vehicle traffic. Train tour guides will give free tours of Nider Hall between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. on June 28th, July 26th, August 23rd, and September 20th. The Historical Society is proud of our long-term partnerships with Haverford Township and the school district, and the beneficial programs that these partnerships enable us to bring to the people of Haverford Township. Thank you for your cooperation with this, and we hope to see you at the Heritage Festival on June 7th.
Last but not least, Ann Phillips.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ann Phillips. I'm at 2620 Wendy Road in Haverford Town. I'm here as a representative from the Freedom Playground Committee to talk about what we are currently doing with Freedom Playground. Most people know that it's located at the Community Park, also known as Haverford Reserve, and it's still under construction, as far as I'm concerned, even though it's been open for a long time now, because we are continuing to do updates with it. So our committee is still up and running, and along with Parks and Rec, we're trying to keep it as beautiful as possible. And to that end, I am here to ask all of you to open up your wallets again, if you can, and help us to continue to fundraise. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, one of the things I get asked for a lot is why the fence posts are all sold and why there aren't any more available. Well, there are plenty still more available, even though they are all installed. So what we have is about 10 extra fence posts that we keep off-site, and when you order a fence post to be engraved, this is the fence line that goes around the perimeter of the playground. We engrave one of the ones that we keep in reserve and then swap it out with one of the ones that is not currently engraved at the playground. The same with the brick pavers that are at the entrance of the playground. Those pavers, we go and order them, and then we have my brother, the bricklayer, come and replace them for us. So they are all still available, and they, there's still quite a lot of them that are available, so we would like to use this as an opportunity right now in the fifth year of the playground to get the rest of them sold off so that we can raise the money that we still need to raise. The reason that we are still raising money is we come out every spring this year, this fall, in order to paint the playground and fix anything that's broken, as well as to coat the pressure-treated lumber that's at the playground. Most of it is composite lumber, but there is some pressure-treated lumber. And then the big thing that we're going to need to do, not that many years from now, is to rip up the top layer of the ground cover. Ground cover costs $130,000 to put down. It was really, aside from the materials, the biggest cost of the playground and the only thing that actually involved paying somebody labor to do that. So that's going to cost a lot of money, upwards of 50, probably closer to about $70,000. So we are continuing to fundraise, and we would like to be able to have the money to do that when the time comes to do that. The problem with the ground cover is that, like everything, it doesn't last forever, and unfortunately, even though there are signs up, many people do bring food and drink into the playground. So I'm going to beg you to not bring food and drink into the playground because it does damage that ground cover, and there are already holes in the ground cover due to wear, but also due to the soda and coffee, because people, you know, walk in with their Starbucks and they spill their coffee, and then it actually has an acidic value and eats into the top of the playground cover. So I'm going to ask everybody to please do as best you can not to do that. We do have a Facebook page, we just went over 2,000 likes, so that was a big deal. So please like us on our Facebook page, Freedom Playground Facebook page, in order to get updates. We have a website, it's called haverfordfreedomplayground.org, and you can see the forums for the fence posts and pavers there. So, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time.
Now we will go to agenda items. Anyone want to speak on agenda items only? First row? Second row? Second row?
No.
Yes. Third row? Fourth row? On this side? First row? Second row?
They're right here.
The agenda. What's on the agenda for tonight?
Does the boss speak on?
That's not on the agenda. You can talk after the meeting. There's an open forum at the end of the meeting where you can speak about anything. This is either registered speakers or, because we've got to get the meeting going here. Next row? And then last row?
Mario?
Yes.
There's a couple people here who would like to speak, and you gave Dr. Levin his three extra minutes. So, could you ask these people if they want to speak, they could come up and speak now?
On what?
On items that they have concerning the township that's been brought up at other meetings.
Rather than make them wait, can we just move the open forum to now?
Yeah, let's move it up now.
I'll make a motion that we change the order and move the open forum to this.
Okay, if you want to, that's fine.
I'll second it.
Okay.
We have to vote.
Now you can come up and speak.
I don't think so.
Voice vote.
Yeah.
Voice vote.
Yeah. All aye?
Aye.
All right.
Oh, you gotta do it, though.
Don't move. Okay. Anyone want to speak? Go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners.
Thank you.
Fellow residents, my name's Bob Brennan. I live at 1611 Greenway Road. Before I get started, Solicitor Byrne, would you mind reading that one section you read earlier regarding the obligations?
If I can find it, sure. The constitutional stuff, the constitutional stuff that we're supposed to preserve, the safety, health, and welfare.
And apologize, I hope this would not lead into...
People have a right to clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of the natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The reason I'm here tonight is because this will be the third time that the library board has decided that they need more parking. Now, the library, first, let me say, I love the library. I live half a block from it. I have been in the library since I was a little kid. This is the third time that I'm coming here. I'm surprised that I'm coming here again to speak up against the library wanting to buy a property, knock it down, and turn it into a parking lot in my neighborhood. I've been told by the presidents of the boards of past library boards that they would never come into our neighborhood again, and they apologize for that. And yet, here I am again, making the same kind of plea. I presented Mr. McGarry earlier today with, or earlier this week, with a study by a group of folks who build parking lots and build parking spaces for a living. It lists the cost per parking space in every city, major city in the United States, New York City being the largest, that I believe around $28,000 a parking space. My understanding is that they're going to buy the property at the corner of Greenway and Milt for probably somewhere in the neighborhood, I would guess, of between $350,000 and $500,000. $500,000 is probably high. I'm not trying to make shock value out of this. They're going to tear it down, and they're going to make a parking spot, which is going to make 11 people very happy for as long as they're going to be in the library. I would ask any one of the commissioners and any one of the people here to ask yourself, if my next-door neighbor went away and they put a parking lot next to my house, would it impact my property values? And the answer has to be yes, all right? Because nobody wants to live next to a parking lot if they can help it. I don't care how well you make it, all right? It's a neighborhood now. It'll be less than a neighborhood later. You're taking a tax-ratable property, and you're knocking it down, and you're giving it to an organization that you already subsidized fairly well, but they didn't pay any taxes. So, everyone in this room and everybody who's listening, you're going to pay a little bit more. Now, maybe that's a quarter. I don't know. But, you know, it's not your neighborhood. It is my neighborhood. I would ask you to think of that as your neighborhood. And I would ask this board to take responsibility. Is it fiscally responsible to build 11 parking spots at an average of 40,000 to 48,000, maybe even higher than that, depending on what you end up spending for this property? Is that fiscally responsible? Is that the way we should be spending our money? Is this what we should be doing to our neighborhoods? I'd ask you to consider that. Thank you very much.
George Zimmerman, 115 Upland Road. I'd like to echo in McLaughlin's thoughts on the speed bumps on Upland Road. And my concern, I was at a wedding the other night, and I was kicking around with some of my friends, and they brought up a scenario I didn't imagine, that would be a precedent being set. Now, you put bumps on Upland Road, somebody's going to come and buy, say, "Why can't I get them on my street?" And I think it's a dangerous thing to set a precedent, as the lawyers all well know. And I think it's something you should take into consideration before you decide one way or the other. So, I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Nobody else? Okay. Yeah, I think you're good. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Grant Connor. I live at 15 Mill Road. I just wanted to echo what Bob Brennan had to say. Three issues. Number one, the aesthetics. I don't know what 11 parking spaces is going to bring aesthetically to the area. I understand functionality. Number two, economics. Where's the return on the investment? I don't see that. Number three, where's the planning? I moved in there in 1995. This was an issue then, to buy the house across the street. And here we are, doing almost a 360, coming around again to buy the house across the street. I just don't want to know where the planning is. There's got to be a better footprint. I think that building's terminal as a library. I think there's got to be better answers. I don't have them, obviously, but I think there's got to be better answers. 11 parking spaces, to me, is just a Band-Aid. Okay, thank you.
Okay, hold on a second.
I'm Bob McDonald, and I live at 7 Mill Road. And prior to that, I lived at 1609 Greenway Road for 52 years of my life. I was there when that library was expanded, and this problem came up back then, and we were told that this parking lot would be sufficient for that. And I echo Bob Brennan's previous comments that this is at least the third time that we've had to come up and deal with this house looking to be demolished for 11 parking spots. It was a bad idea the other two times, and still a bad idea today. So, I don't see why this bad idea has to keep resurfacing every time in order to address this problem that Grant has already pointed out, that we need a better solution than demolishing, taking down this home and putting up 11 parking spots. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Tim Nielsen. I live at 1607 Greenway. Bob, Bob, and Grant are my neighbors. I'm retired. I'm living on a fixed income, and this gets very personal. I don't think it's a no-brainer to me to understand that less than 50 feet away from me, there's going to be a parking lot, and that will affect the value of my home. And my home, at this point, is really a big part of my retirement planning. My wife and I were in a terrible accident 10 years ago. She continues to pay for that accident. Our future's uncertain, and my home was a huge consideration in terms of the value of that for the next phase in our lives. And now, I don't know what's going to happen. I don't think this is a good idea to tear down a house for 11 parking lots. I'm really struggling with the vision of the commissioners for this. I was here at the last commissioners' meeting. I hear what the library said. I don't know if there's anything more they can do for another plan, but it's very upsetting, and it's very personal. Thank you.
All right, Bob. I'll get you in a minute.
Hello, commissioners and residents. My name is Bob McCray. I live at 2446 St. Dennis Lane for the past 35 years, and I'm a candidate for Republican Commissioner in the third ward. I've been talking to a lot of residents in the area, and I told them, you know, I would bring some of their concerns to the board and let them know what these people who live here for all these years are concerned about. The three primary things that came up most often was the YMCA. And when we had the meeting the other night, the YMCA expressed no idea that they would cap or limit their membership, so it could grow and grow and grow, creating more traffic and still bring us more parking problems. Commissioner D'Amelio mentioned that, when they first presented it, that they were not going to close the Ardmore Y yet. After they opened the facility, the Ardmore Y closed, so we have to increase the membership and expand it larger and quicker than anybody anticipated. The second thing is the traffic, going through, people speeding through the neighborhoods on the cut-throughs, and a lot of people are concerned with their little children, and, you know, even some of the older people just being out for a walk and people go zooming by. Obviously, speed bumps is not the answer, so we need to see what we can do. I know we can't change the speed limit, because the speed limit restrictions are from the state. And then the third thing is, some of the people have questioned what will happen to the recycling center when the police station is constructed, and they want to know where they could still go to drop off their recycling and not have to wait, you know, a whole week if they had an abundance of recyclable materials. By increasing the awareness of recycling in the township will lower the cost of our tipping fees, and it would be a benefit to have recycling somewhere else in the township. Thank you.
You have to come up. Yeah. You have to come up to the microphone so we can get you.
Dan McLaughlin, 125 Upland Road. Just from what other people are saying, from the zoning, I was writing down, you wanted to protect the rights of residents, from what you read from that zoning list. Well, I feel that way about the rights of residents right around that speed bump on Upland Road. And also, Mario, you had said to go down and check the speed bumps on Steel Road, that if, I'm hoping, the permanent ones would be put in, which I'm hoping they won't be, that they would be similar to those, but nobody lives on Steel Road. They're not residential, they're near the golf course. So, again, I'm totally opposed to these speed bumps and hope it will be... Oh, and the other one was taken out, and I actually do not go up that way. I go Manola Road, so I don't have to go over them. And the one was taken out because of the snow, the plow. Ours is still in, so we're still getting the vibrations and so forth, so, Mario. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being no one else, we'll answer some of these questions. I can, Upland Road, we can talk about that. The process that we took on, first of all, we passed a speed hump ordinance in this township years ago. So, that speed hump ordinance allowed people to, you know, for us to put speed humps in in Haverford Township. There is a threshold, and John, you can give us that threshold, on the amount of cars and the speed in which cars are going up the street to be able to put a speed hump in. So, we set these priorities ahead of time. So, in answering your question about would it set a precedent that'd be all over the place, no, they wouldn't, because there has to be a certain amount of cars and a certain amount of speed over the posted speed limit. And we were asked by the residents to come out and to measure the speed and to see if we could use a speed hump ordinance, if we could put a speed hump in. The police department did that. They measured the speed. The speed was 30 miles an hour, which was five miles over the posted speed limit, which fell within the range, and the amount of vehicles coming over, I'm not sure what that number was, but it was over the criteria. So, what's required after that, according to our ordinance, is an 80% of the people on the street to agree to these speed humps. And we got 90, maybe 90% of those, of people filled out, and so, we began the speed hump process, which was having the engineer come out and measure where the best places were and put the speed humps in. Now, we can't put in 12-foot temporary speed humps, and what I was saying to Ann was that we, the ones down there on Steel Road are what we use, and we also use them on Highland Avenue. But, those are what would be put in, not the short ones where you bump over. But because we cannot get a temporary speed hump that is of that size, we have to put these in for the reason that we're seeing here, so that the residents get used to, and maybe they don't, maybe they don't want them. So, what we do is, we put them in, we put in temporaries, we allow people to get used to them, and if they don't get used to them, then we see, then we go back and measure the, again, the amount of cars coming by and the speed, to see if there's a difference in speed. It did lower the speed limit. It fell into the criteria in which the police and Larry felt that this is, falls within the criteria. And it did, so we sent, Larry sent a letter out saying that it fell within that criteria. The last part of that that I left out, and that's my fault, was that there is a petition that needs to be signed at the end so that everybody is happy with what is happening, and that criteria is 80%. I am in the process of going through that. Now, it's not an easy process, because a lot of people aren't home. So, I've got to go on different days to make sure that we get everybody, that everybody has a say, and signatures from everybody. We also have for and against the speed hump. That process will probably be done in a week, and when that, when we have either 80% or we don't cross the 80%, we will take them up, put them down. What happened with the speed hump up the street was that it was hit. We're not sure if it...
It was hit by a plow during one of the snowstorms. I got a call from Mario. We went over there, bolted down. We went over, I took it out that morning, because it was a hazard.
And I believe that was a non-t township plow. It was a non-t township.
It was a non-t township.
No.
No, no, we're done. Okay, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
You know, the speed hump policy, it's very strict as far as where they can go and what the process is. And we, with the police department, understand that your concerns, that you want to slow cars down, but we also understand what speed humps do when you live close by to them, and you all echoed that tonight. So, there's pros and cons with them, but when you have a constant bump, bump, it's very difficult. But, like you had said, the golf courses are there. They do their job there, but nobody lives there. So, this is why we put temporary ones in, so we take them up.
Yeah, and the reason why I told you to go to golf course, because it is different when you go over, when you're going over the ones on Steel, which would be if you get the 80%, those, when you go over them, you can go over them at 20, 25 miles an hour and not have it, the car go up and down. With the speed humps that you have right now, it's going to bump no matter what. No matter how slow you go, it's going to make noise when a lawn truck goes over it, when any of those things. It makes a lot of noise. I'm not saying it doesn't. But the reason why I asked that you go down and see that is so that you see that it's not, people are not going to stop. They're going to continue going over those at 20 miles an hour. It's going to slow them down. Okay? All right.
On me?
On you.
Okay. Well, I think the next one was Dr. Levin. Dr. Levin has been here from...
Oh, I'm sorry. That's correct. Did you want to answer that?
Was that, I'm sorry, a question on?
The question on...
Was there a real estate study done? I don't think it was...
No, we don't do real estate studies.
Was there a real estate study done, if the speed bumps were back by property?
No, that's not part of the requirement. We do not have, it's not a part of the requirement. It's actually not part of a requirement for any township ordinance, so... But again, I think, I don't want to keep beating this, I think the commissioner and the deputy chief basically said, we didn't go out there and put them, we were asked to put them in. We follow strict ordinance to try to help with the speeding problem. If the residents don't want them, I tell you to just get the... If the residents don't want them, I tell you to just get the, get, help Mr. Oliva. If we get the correct data, we'll be glad to take them out. As soon as I get that, I'll have the crews there and they'll be out within a day. But we have to do, we have to follow the same procedure as a petition to get them in. Like I said, we didn't, we didn't go to the residents, they asked to put them, residents came to us.
Right.
You know, Mario is one of the hardest-working commissioners in the township. He's trying to deal with a speeding issue his residents call him about. We have speeding issues throughout the township.
And really, this is the first time, Steve, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is the first time we're putting in speed humps in a residential area. So, it's a learning curve for everyone, okay? People, a lot of people like these, you know, like the idea of having a speed hump, and they don't know what it's like when it's in. So, that's why we put the temporary ones in. So, before, you know, we, we put this ordinance into place, we have, we have followed this procedure that we put into place, and so, you know, we'll, we'll know more at the end, probably in about a week or so, I will have all the signatures, whether it's for or against.
Are you informed?
Well, you'll be informed because either it'll go or new ones will go down. And I'd be glad to walk through, I've been through the neighborhood many, many times in the last couple of weeks and be, and inform people of what's happening.
I was just going to say, piggyback on what he was saying about the humps on where the golf course is.
Yes.
They're much, much different. Much different than what you have now. So, I would just go by there and just take a look at that. Okay.
The other problem is they don't deter speeding.
No, they don't.
Okay, thank you. All right.
They slow down, though.
We need to move on. We've got a lot of agenda to cover here.
Oh, speed, you know...
Go ahead.
Dr. Levin actually brought up...
I'm sorry, I just have, we have a lot to go through.
Do we know whether it solved whether the problem there was? Did it reduce, did the police measure the...
Did it reduce the speed? Yes. We, it reduced the amount of, of speed and it reduced the amount of things. That all was given to the residents, and that letter from Larry, that it had reduced that.
He's going to let you know. He's going to let you know. He will.
They were effective, yes.
They were.
And, and the residents here are not saying that they're not effective, what they're saying is that it bumps like crazy. I was out there, it does. There's no, no doubt about it.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's a variety of traffic calming devices you can use. You can use fences that partially obstruct the road that people have to serpentine through. There's a number of different ways to calm traffic.
Right, and this was the best way that we thought, in this area, we looked at all those things, we went, went down. Upland Road is probably one of the worst, would you agree? One of the worst streets for the amount of traffic that goes down there?
It's a thruway.
Yeah, it's a thruway. It's the only street that goes from Manoa all the way to Eagle, so people use, the amount of cars that come down Upland is just amazing, but...
Yeah, I mean, we have an issue in the sixth ward on Chestnut and on Avon because of the backup of traffic on Windwood, and people cut over to Haveford Avenue and then go down there because the lights are better. So, I'm hip. I mean, it's just that that is the cost of these speed humps, is that there's...
Right.
There's noise, there's vibration, there's...
And I don't think people realize that when they say to put them in, they don't realize that they actually cause a lot of these issues.
The one, the golf is different. You know you were from the 60s, Larry.
Why would I do?
You have hip. You said that last week, this week.
I, that's what I've said for years.
Okay, can we move on? Go ahead.
I'm just, I'm trying to see.
All right, come on.
Dr. Levin talked about storm, stormwater issues throughout the township, and he gave a lot of information for the residents, or the commissioners to read. I add that to our ongoing research that the, myself and the township engineers is doing. Again, I'll repeat, there's no decisions have been made by this board, there's only been discussion on possible recommendations. And currently, Mr. Penone's department is working on behalf of the township on four grants to help within, to help resolve some of the stormwater problems in the township. Those four grants are a modemodal, our floodplain mitigation grant, a watershed, and a greenways grant. We had a conference call with the gentlemen from the state, and they do sound promising, but they have to be in the end of June, so it'll be a few months before we have any information. Dr. Levin also asked about the trail going from the Bennett Field to the YMCA. As of right now, we believe that it will be a, we will start that trail with a, like a wood chip-type material that will be ADA accessible. He also mentioned air quality relating to the YMCA. I'm not going to comment on that, that's relating to the YMCA. And he did talk about some storm drains along Mill Road, and he's correct, some of those drains, as well as the curbing, has lowered. The curbs are, obviously, the residents' responsibilities, the township does not do curbs. So, we actually have a very good curb policy that went into place, so that'll be improved over the years. Our public works department has replaced some inlets, I spoke to Dr. Levin, and we're going to be replacing some other ones along Mill Road in that vicinity with a different type of grade that should also help capture some of the water and redirect the flow in a proper direction. So, there'll be more discussions on the stormwater once we get some definitive commitments from these grants. Mrs. Coffey, I was here, from the historical society, thank you for coming and giving us that great information. Really appreciate everyone doing the things they do in the community to keep these buildings up, and I've been there personally. We've done some work over the Niter Hall as far as having it repaint it and repoint it into some new roofs, but our buildings are old, so we need to come up with some additional funding sources to help maintain those buildings, and this board has a plan. And, yeah, we do have a plan, we'll discuss it another time, but we're, we have a direction where they're going to go to put some money towards redoing some of those buildings, so we do appreciate. Any information you can forward to my office, I'll be glad to help you with these events to get that out onto the cable channel, as well as to put it into our, our social media account. So, thank you. Mrs. Phillips was here, talking about another great program that we have in our community, Freedom Playground. I don't think anybody in Haveford Township hasn't been there. I know that I get compliments from people from Upper Darby, from Marple, from Newtown. It is a great, great addition to this community. In fact, I think they just did an action weather report there a few weeks ago. I don't know if you had an opportunity to see that, that got a lot of great press. So, I will get this information as well as on our social media to help you get some of the fundraising to Kenya to make sure that stays around for a long time. I won't touch any of the ones on the library parking, I'll leave that up to the board members. Again, no decision has been made.
Larry, can I jump in here for that one?
Just let me finish with Mr. McCreton, and then I'll let you, it's up to Mr. Oliva. We do have a traffic problem, Mr. McCreton, in the town. I know the police department is chasing traffic, but I would say, my opinion, worst thing's ever happened to this community has been the Blue Route. It's not going to go anywhere. I said that when I was in healthcare and worked for Haveford Hospital, and it's been, it's been a bad thing for the community, but the majority of the traffic that I see, and I'm out on the road probably three hours a day, majority of it is our residents. The people living in the community are cutting through. I don't know what, what more a police officer can do to enforce the traffic laws than they are out doing it. So, that'll be more of a discussion down the road. As far as the recycling center, we do have a probable location, nothing is definite. We're very limited where we can put that, and right now, we're looking at Old, on Hilltop Road by the entrance to the public works yard. That's probably where it's going to go. Is it the best location? No.
No.
We have another location I'm looking at, but I don't want to put it out there in the community and cause undue panic at this time, but we're looking at, we have about a year to make that decision before we actually break ground. And then, Mr. McGarrity talks about...
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I agree with Mr. Brennan, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Zimmerman, Mr. Connor, and Mr. McDonald about the parking at the library and taking of the home. Roughly speaking, the YMCA, for instance, we took two homes up there, and in tax revenues that a township, county, and school district, the taxpayers of Haveford Township, it's going to cost them $12,000 a year, $120,000 over 10 years. Now, with the library, it would be roughly $6,000 to $7,000 in taxes, $70,000 over the 10-year period. And alls I hear is the seniors telling us that we're taxing them out of this township. So, I voted against the YMCA, and I will vote against the taking of this home and building additional parking. I think there's other ways to find parking at the library, but I'm not going to get into that issue right now, but that's my opinion, and that's what I'll do when the time comes for the vote.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
I do just have to make sure the record is clear, that the word "taking" is a very loaded word in the government. It suggests that the, any eminent powered, eminent domain powers are being exercised. That's not being discussed at all, not, I'm not challenging your overall impression of this, Mr. McGarrity. I just want to make sure very clear that everybody in this township understands there was no taking of those two properties at Lawrence and Eagle.
Purchasing, that's you use the right word, purchasing.
Yeah, that's the right word. They were purchased at Lawrence and Eagle, and any discussion by the library is talking about purchasing this property. There is no discussion at this board of any taking, and the library has no power to take any property. So, just want to make sure that's very clear for the listening audience.
All right.
And the attentive audience.
We're not going to have back and forth from the audience.
Only the board can take, only a governmental body can take. We cannot authorize and delegate to someone else the ability to take property. The library is a standalone organization, has its own rules, has its own reporting, has its own, regardless of whether or not we subsidize them. Whatever the library wants to do, the library does as a library entity. It is not a municipal body, it does not have the power to take, nor can we delegate that power to them.
Well, the purchasing of this property at Greenway would cost the taxpayers roughly, if we purchase it, anywhere from $350,000 to $500,000, and then we lose almost $200,000 in a 10-year period, and there's no tax revenues coming back in, it's all money that's just lost. And we, and basically, the library this year, we subsidized, forget all this other stuff we're talking about, $1,078,000. I don't think we can go any higher now.
We have to move on.
Either we're going to engage this discussion now, or we'll do it at a later time. But first of all, this board, the library will make the determination, not this board, as to whether they're going to purchase property. Second, the issue of parking is a sensitive issue, but I think it's also something people have to realize, and I don't know what the library's going to do, they're going to make their own independent judgment. But when you hear 11 parking spots and you realize that those spots may well turn over six times a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year, that is the possibility of having 24,000 cars parked there over a year. Now, I understand the residents' concern over that, but the flip side of that is 24,000 cars is roughly 10% of the library's annual number of people who use it, circulation. So, it's not 11 cars a day. So, it's a much greater debate than this board, first of all, that this board can't have because it's not our debate.
Right, exactly.
Second, it simplifying it is not helping anyone, because it is far more complex, and that's why the library said when they were here that they were going to evaluate it. But I think we do a disservice by simply throwing out numbers. We have property in this township that is, goes to, goes to nonprofit, that goes off the tax rolls, that goes on the tax rolls on an annual basis. That's part of the nature of any municipality, and we've dealt with this, where, you know, Grace Chapel buys property, the Y buys property, all nonprofits do. If someone owned a nonprofit and bought it, it would go off the tax rolls and vice versa. So, I don't think we do any service by simplifying, trying to simplify this and trying to debate it in, you know, at this time.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right.
I think you did vote for the Y, too.
That is, that is...
I think you did vote for the Y.
All right.
No, I didn't vote for the Y, no. It was eight to one. Y was the one.
Not sure about that.
All right, let's go to approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 13th, 2015.
I voted against, right?
Motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio? Yes. Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrity?
Couldn't help it.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Number six, approval of warrants. Commissioner Holmes?
Mr. President, Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number five of 2015 totaling $4,258,654.67, comprising the general and sewer fund payroll for April 9, 2015, in the amount of $589,837.96. The general and sewer fund payroll for April 23, 2015, in the amount of $601,928.11. General fund dispersment's number five of 2015, in the amount of $1,120,395.8. The sewer fund dispersment's number five of 2015, in the amount of $123,643.12. The community development block grant fund dispersment number five of 2015, in the amount of $51,709.83. The home grant fund, number five of 2015, in the amount of $22,525.50. The cable access equipment fund, number five of 2015, in the amount of $3,175. Capital projects fund dispersment number five of 2015, in the amount of $119,959.29. Two credit card statements, one ending April 6 of 2015, in the amount of $1,595, and one ending April 27 of 2015, in the amount of $3,504.53. And the scheduled debt service payment on Series 10, I'm sorry, Series 2010 ACH, due on June 1, 2015, in the amount of $1,620,381.25. Somebody want a second?
Anybody? Motion made and seconded?
Mr. President, our township auditor has reviewed all of these warrants. Any questions that he has had, he has advanced to our finance director, who has answered them to his satisfaction. It is his recommendation, and therefore mine, that we approve these warrants.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio? Yes. Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrity stepped out. Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. President?
All right, number seven.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the second reading of ordinance number P90, I'm sorry, P4 of 2015, amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, known as the general laws of the township of Haveford, adopted June 30, 1986, by amending the use provisions of the C2 neighborhood commercial district.
Second.
Motion made and seconded? This is a second reading?
Yes, Mr. President, as we talked about last month, this is to fix a situation in our, in our zoning map where the C2 neighborhood, which includes certain types of commercial uses, but does not include single-family detached or semi-detached dwelling, even though throughout our township, those homes are sprinkled throughout the C2 neighborhood commercial district. And unlike making a change where we are adding commercial opportunities to an otherwise residential place, which of course can cause a great deal of consternation, here we are adding residential uses to an otherwise commercial space, which really frankly, I think no one has any problem with, and more important, is correcting a problem that a number of our homeowners have to deal with anytime they try to transfer their property, and they run into issues with their homeowner's insurance. Ms. Hanlon Woodup was, went through this all with us last month, and for the same reasons as last month, I'd ask we adopt a second reading as well.
All right. Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio? Yes. Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
I wasn't here for that.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Number eight, ordinance number P5, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P5, 2015, amending and supplementing the general laws of the township of Haveford, Chapter 182 zoning, by reclassifying the zoning and classification of certain properties known as Delaware County, Folio number 22-0600335-00, from R4 low to medium-density residential district to INS institutional district, and Delaware County Folio numbers 22-0300505-00, And Delaware County folio numbers 22-0300505-00, 22-03-00504-00, 22-03-00503-00, 22-03-00502-00. Keep going, right? 22-3-00501-00, 22-03-005000-00, 22-03-00858-00 from institutional district to R4 low to medium density residential district.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Number nine, ordinance number P 8, 2015.
Mr. President, ordinance number P 8, 2015, garbage refuse recycling regulation, second reading. Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance P 8, 2015, further amending and supplementing chapter 95, garbage, rubbish, and refuse.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Ordinance number P 9, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P 9, 2015, amending and supplementing chapter 119 nuisances by amending the following provisions and adding provisions for chronic nuisance property. And if I get a second, I'd like Lori to again.
Sure.
Come up and talk about this.
Second.
Okay, Lori, would you like to? And this is the second reading. We talked about this.
Yes, but I want the public to understand what we're doing again.
What we proposed was an amendment, initially an amendment to the housing codes to identify nuisance housing and it was expanded to non-residential uses to address nuisance, chronic nuisance properties in general. We added a new article in the nuisances chapter of the general laws where the police or the codes enforcement office, where there's repetitive complaints about a property, it gives an additional enforcement tool to those agencies by allowing them to hand the files over to the solicitor when they meet the minimum requirements for the number of complaints for repeating the same complaint. So it's where somebody has either not addressed the complaint and it just continues, or they correct it and then they repeat the same, doing the same activity that got them in trouble before. They can then hand the file to the township solicitor and the solicitor can initiate civil enforcement proceedings.
So whether it's residential or commercial.
Correct.
We have quite a few of these properties in the township that, that's why we created this ordinance.
It's a great ordinance, I love it.
I have one in my ward that we have had some problems with.
It gives us more teeth to deal with those issues.
Yes, I guess we're going to be filing some suits, lawsuits.
I'm sure.
So Lori, can I just clarify on that? So that goes to the solicitor and the solicitor files a lawsuit, so it doesn't fall on the property owner that files the complaint?
No, it's, because here, there's a township ordinance that has to be corrected. So if the township doesn't take the requisite enforcement action, is it a complaint mandamus against the township? So I mean, you don't want to see that. You want to continue to aggressively try and enforce the provisions of the code.
Perfect.
Correct, and it would be the, it wouldn't be the resident.
Exactly, it would be the solicitor. Exactly. Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Following these lawsuits.
And this is after, you know, a codes official or a police officer has issued summary charges instituted, a summary action against them in district court, and it still hasn't gotten us anywhere.
Okay.
Any closer to compliance.
Thank you.
So, so, I'm sorry, before you go, so we have a residential property and someone, or if, there's a residential property that just parties till 3 o'clock in the morning and the police are called out there several times. That.
That would be one of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's not, sometimes it's not parties.
No, I get it.
Thanks, Lori.
Yeah. All discussion complete?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Number 11, ordinance number P 10, 2015.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P 10, 2015, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highway. Sticker parking only on Ralston Avenue, south side from Belvedere to the Dead End Track Bed. Parking of commercial vehicles in excess of 8,000 pounds prohibited at all times on Martin Avenue, north side from Railroad Avenue to Lancaster Avenue.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
I saw that truck that Heilmann was talking about and that shouldn't be parked in anybody's front yard there.
Yeah, I agree with that. And we also have, I just want to remind everybody, when we put these restrictions in, and I've had calls about this, signs have to go up because we have to enforce, we can't enforce something with, if there's no signs up. So there's going to be signs coming up in the neighborhood and as you know, you know, you get sign pollution after a while and, and it doesn't look good. So just reiterating what my, some of my, when you put one of these restrictions in, it does.
And the truck's going to get moved to the next block.
Right, and it's going to be moved to the next block and the sign sits there.
And this is where I agree with Bill on this.
I still think we need to come up with a more universal.
Yep.
Thing because I, we've gone through this, you restrict it on Block A, pull it around to the side street where it's not restricted.
I have the same thing in my ward.
And you move around the complaints.
We tried, we tried putting together a comprehensive, a comprehensive plan.
I think we need to look at it again. I think.
I agree.
I think we should make a commitment that at the next work session, we discuss this. Can we do that?
Sure.
Sure. But I mean, there are various categories of things. Sticker parking in a neighborhood is just to chase out commuters, but they just move to the next neighborhood.
No, I get it, but.
Eventually you sticker enough neighborhoods that it's just too far to walk to the train.
Right.
No, this is more than just stickers.
But the trucks, I mean, that's an issue. We live in a town with a lot of folks who work, you know, who have, you know, who are contractors, who otherwise, you know, whose truck comes home with them every day. And if we decide there are neighborhoods that can't park those, where are those folks going to keep that?
But there are a lot of people that work for companies that bring their trucks home. That's a problem. That's a real problem. Where plows can't get up the street, emergency vehicles can't get up the streets.
Where are we going to make?
That's a problem.
I mean, anytime we make a decision like this, we're making a decision on the margin, okay? We're deciding what, what's better. Are we dealing with the people who chronically take their work truck home or are we penalizing the people who only have a work truck? And that's their truck and they drive it to the supermarket on weekends and they drive it to the jobs during the week?
And I, I don't want to, we can have this discussion at the work session. This is what, what needs to be discussed. Because just like.
Right, but this is still, this analysis has to take place every time, as you say, we pollute our streets with more signs.
Signs.
And we have to ask ourselves, what, what harm are we curing right now with each one of these signs? Special purpose parking in front of somebody's property who needs the special purpose parking zone? Great, that makes sense. Sticker parking because we're trying to check, chase out commuters, you know, we really got to evaluate that as to where, what's the next neighborhood that's going to get all that overflow?
But you're talking about someone.
Anytime we talk about trucks.
You're talking about a commissary who had to make a decision based on what she has in front of her and that's why we should bring it up.
Yeah, we should, we need to have a.
In a work session.
Yeah, a discussion.
And discuss it at length.
Yep, I agree.
We're doing, as Bill said, we're moving all these issues from neighborhood to neighborhood and it's.
Well, this Ralston happens to be overflow from the YMCA, so that's with that, which I think I explained at the work session, but I know Commissioner Holmes was not here.
All right. Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Number 12, ordinance number P 11, 2015.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance number P 11 by repealing chapter 154 signs, amending chapter 182 zoning by adding a definition for off premises advertising signs at 182-106B, and amending various provisions of section 182-701 signs.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, let's fight him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I moved this ordinance so that we could, we could discuss it. I think this billboard discussion has been going on for half of my term in this, as commissioner in this township. And we've undergone a lot of expert analysis. We've gone through a variety of different litigation with folks involved in this. I mean, I think it is the reasonable conclusion of our solicitor. I think it is the reasonable conclusion of the experts who have testified on our behalf. And I think it should be the conclusion of this board, that there is not anywhere in the nine and a half square miles of Haveford Township, an appropriate place for the kind of billboards we're talking about, 50 feet high and 682 square feet in size. I just, and I think whatever ordinance we pass has to make that clear and explicit, that it is a finding of this, an intelligent finding of this township based upon expert analysis, based upon our, the litigation we've gone through, that whatever else we do with these smaller signs, to the extent that we are talking about billboards as defined as the freestanding, you know, structures on 50-foot poles that have been, you know, the introduction of which into our township has been the subject of this litigation for the last few years, I think we have to clearly and explicitly prohibit those.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more.
So I would want this ordinance, and I believe this ordinance as written right now, does indeed eliminate any place in this township from being able to host one of those signs. As a result, I think we can tweak this ordinance to make more explicit the prohibition on the billboards without having to throw it out entirely. But I think we need to be more explicit.
You concur with that, Mr. Byrne?
I do, I do.
Did you want to go?
You can go.
Jim, Mr. Byrne, would this be the appropriate time, though, that you would address within this particular ordinance, whether you put a limitation on how many billboards would be at a septic station or on lighting, or is there anything that can be, is it appropriate at this time to take additional measures within this particular ordinance or?
Well, I guess it all depends, not a very good answer, but I guess it all depends on what those measures are. I mean, some measures we, we probably could handle, you know, without a whole lot of difficulty.
Okay.
Some measures might be more, might need some more scientific research, might need some more backing before I would say, yes, let's, let's, let's do this.
So, and it's my understanding we need to do this by June, so what is our, how broad?
Well, what we need to do by June is, you remember when I started out tonight, I said we had enacted the municipal curative amendment.
Right, exactly.
So we need to figure out at the end of a six-month period whether we're going to change our ordinance or whether we're going to reaffirm our ordinance as it was. And so one or the other of those.
Right.
We just have to take some action by, by the, by the end of June, or by the June It would seem to me that it's a reasonable action to take because times have changed and, you know, the laws have to change with them, that the provisions that take the governance of the, of the transit station ads and those types of things, to designate them as outdoor advertising and to place them into the zoning code.
Right.
So I think that that's one thing that we can do.
Okay.
I think that we've tried to address some of the other matters with respect to luminance and those types of things. We need to get an ordinance in place. We need to change that as we, as we go along and as we learn more about this industry, then we can do that. So I don't think you need to do everything all at once, but I do think we need to address the overall question of outdoor advertising at this point.
Okay.
So I think, I think that bringing the, bringing the signs from the transit shelters and the bench signs and that whole bunch of ordinances into our zoning code is a good move and it's a move that I think we should make.
And move it into this ordinance?
I'm sorry, just let me clarify a second. You're talking about repealing chapter 154.
Right.
Which is where, where that is located and then moving that, adding it into 182.
Right, I mean, it's not word for word adding it, but it's, that's where.
Amending chapter 182.
Right, that's where it will be, those provisions will be generally, yes.
Right, by adding a definition of off-premier signs.
Right, so 154 is just part of the general code, well, so is the zoning, but 182 is more specifically the zoning.
Right. All right. Are you done?
Steve.
No, you can go now.
I'll say what I said earlier. While I agree with the sentiment of the board, I believe that this ordinance does not cure the issues that were addressed by the Commonwealth Court. I think it's flawed in the sense of how it's drafted and will only lead to litigation that will bring us back here in X number of years. I agree with the repealing of section 154, but I think that's more of a technical area. But what this essentially does is create a definition of billboards and then say, provide no use. If we're going to say no billboards, then we have to justify it in the language, in the introduction to the ordinance and with findings that support it because they're part of a legislative history that will be reviewed by a court. As this ordinance stands, I think it just will lead us to more litigation. I know we need to have something passed. I just don't think this is the right vehicle.
Can I respond to that? Sure, you can.
I mean, I, I agree with Commissioner Siegel in terms of if we, if we go to no, spelling out no, you know, prohibition on billboards, that we beef up the purpose clause with some of the, some of the, some language from all of the studies that have been done and there has been a lot of work done.
Okay, so, anybody else? Okay, so if we were to take, the way I'm looking at this, if we were to take repeal chapter 154 and then amend 182 by adding the definitions of those, of what is now bench signs and mask, what are the other ones? The.
Transit.
Yeah, the transit shelter signs and then edit off there.
Well, and I think what Commissioner Siegel had also suggested, was a good suggestion, is to beef up the purpose clause a little bit.
Right.
And I think, I think that we could do all of that, you know, as, if you approve that as, to be done, that we could do that now and make those changes before we advertise and then still advertise and our, I think that our trip to the county planning commission is scheduled for May 21st, right, Lori? So, so I'm pretty confident that we could attend the county planning commission and get those changes incorporated into that and then still be back here in June on our second reading of the ordinance after it's advertised.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I, as would I point out to me, yeah, there is a purpose section. I don't think that section does what we need. That is more generic in terms of things. And it may be that we need not only a purpose section, but either findings or conclusions And it may be that we need not only a purpose section, but either findings or conclusions, because they, we can ask a court through the Statutory Construction Act to look at the legislative intent, and the legislative intent is typically in findings or something. Now, we don't normally do that here, because we're passing traffic or at other ordinances. But if we're going to try to create something that will withstand, you know, you know, scrutiny, and then I think we have to, you know, do that. Otherwise, we're just, you know, treading water.
Yeah, I think we could probably do that.
Would that represent a substantive change between now and then?
Well, I don't think that's a problem right now, because we do it now, and then before it's advertised, we'll be okay.
I mean, my suggestion is that I, I mean, I've, I've moved us to adopt a first reading of this ordinance, P 11, that we've looked at, saying that we're appealing Chapter 154 signs, we're amending Chapter 182, we're adding definitions of off-premises advertising signs at 182, 106, and amending various provisions of Section 182, seven signs. And we will also be entering legislative findings that the township has concluded that billboards of a specific size, and I'm using billboards now as a, as a term of art for purposes of how you define it. We're talking about the kind of billboards that have been the subject of the litigation we're dealing with in terms of, in terms of size, in terms of location, that it is the finding of this, of this legislative body with the help of expert testimony, police testimony, and through, through the litigation process, that, that, that billboards of those natures are not approved within the township of Haverford. And I think we should find that that is in the interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Haverford Township. So, I would simply, I would, I would move that we adopt the ordinance as, as was drafted, but ask that whoever seconded the ordinance second my amendment to include those legislative findings and purposes. And the explicit prohibition of the installation of billboards and the erection of billboards in Haverford Township.
All right. If we're going to do that, I'm sorry, do we need a second?
Someone has to approve what I?
Who made the second?
Bill.
I, I accept that.
Right, Bill's second.
Okay. I think we're, I think adding the other signs into this, if we're, if we're going to say that these, that the, that the billboards, you know, we're going to define billboards and our findings and all that, that's fine, but I think if we start adding the monument signs and things like that, we're, I don't, I don't like that in there, because we're, we're defining billboards, you know, they've given us a, they've, they've told us we need to.
So, you would prefer to just have the, move the transit materials over and then have a prohibition on, on billboards after that?
I, I agree exactly with that.
That television right there, that's about 25 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this ordinance as written doesn't allow anything much bigger than twice that size, and that's in shopping centers.
I agree, but why are we, why are we?
You worry.
Why are we adding this if what we're doing is trying to prevent billboards?
Well, we are also trying to satisfy the directive of the Commonwealth Court to draft an ordinance about signs that isn't just a flat-out prohibition against any kind of signs.
But it isn't a flat-out prohibition, because we have already bench signs, which are, which are in, which we're moving into 182.
But we're pretty much redrafting the ordinance to just basically allow everything that's already there to stay there, but we're otherwise preventing anything else in the township.
Those type of signs were not found to be in conformity with the municipal planning code. That's why, we're consolidating and we're clarifying, but we need to do more.
Well, I don't know, and I don't mean to disagree with you, I mean, I'm not, but, but I do, I do, I do think that those types of signs were, I mean, I think that there were signs down to, down to 50 or 60 feet that were, that the Commonwealth Court has already found that they're okay.
Right.
And they're the types of signs, and they have never gotten to a, it's one of the difficult, I think one of the most difficult issues in this whole case is nobody knows what a billboard is.
Correct.
Commissioner Holmes, you're right, that that's a billboard, well, I would suggest that that's a billboard, or that, that's a billboard, this is a billboard, I mean, what is a billboard?
But that's not unsafe.
That's exactly right.
That's not unsafe.
But 680 square feet and 55 feet up above Barnabys, that is what our experts have determined
is not safe.
Commissioner, may I, may I say something? I've been waiting like.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about, when Commissioner Hall brought up the ordinance for the traffic, we talked about sign pollution, and, well, what is this? This is adding more pollution. This is not an issue of free speech. That's a crock. We allow signs in this township, and we regulate those signs. It's an issue of safety, and it's an issue of whether or not this township's residents have a right to live in a neighborhood that doesn't have that kind of, I call it blight. Okay, so, what, what the solicitor just showed us was a billboard, he's right. That is, that could be considered a billboard. Those monument signs to me are billboards. I respect Commissioner Siegel's, I respect Commissioner Siegel's concerns about litigation, but you know what? Sometimes you have to defend the constitutional rights of its residents.
The residents of this township do not have a constitutional right not to see a sign that looks like this. They don't have that right.
They have rights, and we should follow them.
They have rights, and we deal with their rights every day, but when you say there aren't First Amendment concerns here, you're just dead wrong.
Really?
The only reason we can ban billboards, the only reason we've been successful so far in stopping billboards is because it intruded on the health, safety, and welfare of the, of the citizenry, and that enables us to overcome the First Amendment and business concerns that, that the rights that the billboard owners and the advertisers have to do this. So, you have to balance those rights. We can't just be a sign-free town, because we want, we want our residents not to look at it.
Well, the Blue Root signs, I mean, how do they do that?
Hold on, hold on a second. But they do have, we do give them the right to use, to put up signs in certain places in the township, so we're not restricting advertisers for coming into Haverford Township and putting things on benches, putting them on, on the, on the bus stops. So, there is a place for them to go.
Yes.
They can, they can put up stuff in the supermarkets, they, you know, when you're pushing the cart, there's an advertisement right there that they, that's there. There are places in this township where you can advertise. So, a free speech issue, I don't see it.
A federal judge in New York, I think in Long Island, ruled in favor of a city to, about the billboards on their highways, you look it up, and said, he was surprised they didn't do anything sooner about it.
I just think, I mean, I think it's better for us, and this is just my opinion, because we all have our differences of opinion, that, that we don't, that we move, that we move over the bus stops and the, and the, the train stops and the benches, move that into, into, what is it, 184? Or 182, I'm sorry. Move it into 184, and just leave it at that.
Yes, I agree.
It's really a difficult issue. I mean, one of the issues.
Then put in the findings, put in our findings.
One of the issues.
But what is our finding? What's our finding? That a 25-square-foot sign above the Manoa Shopping Center is a danger? Or is a blight? Are we going to say that's a blight? It's actually not a legitimate reason to say they can't do it.
Can I, can I just jump in for one minute?
Again, we're adding.
Because, because, I mean, you know, having followed this for so long, if you, if you take the billboard applicant's testimony as being truthful and being accurate, then anything lower than 55 feet and less than 672 square feet on, at least on Westchester Pike, Lancaster Pike, Baltimore Pike, and Springfield is unsafe on those type of roads. There was no question about their testimony with that. In fact, they had a witness that got up and said, it should be bigger than 672 square feet. So, my thought is they wouldn't be happy with something like that. They'd tell us that that's unsafe. And, you know, it's a little different when you get to the transit-type stops, because they are addressed more to walking individuals, cars, as Lori said, that are stopped next to it, people getting on and off trains, where they're not looking. I mean, the big, the big distinction in these cases has been the types of highways and types of roadways, this is just the traffic, traffic safety portion, is when you have limited-access highways, such as I-95 and those types of things, those big signs are okay from a safety perspective, because at that point, you're able to look at it, and you're able to look back and read it, and look back and read it. The applicants, again, their own testimony is, it takes somewhere around 12 seconds to digest a billboard, that you need to be able to see a billboard for 12 seconds, so that you can look at the billboard and look back at the road, look at the billboard, look back at the road. Part of our arguments at some of the zoning hearings, it was that, well, good luck closing your eyes for 12 seconds on Westchester Pike. We're taking your eyes off the road for two or three seconds. And there's actually a lot of studies that say there's a two-second distraction, and maybe even less. There's a study in Switzerland that gets it down even less than two seconds. So, it's, it has to do a lot around here with the types of roads we have, because they're not limited-access roads. You have kids crossing the street, you have people crossing the street, you have people getting off the buses. And then if you go off the major highways, it's really kind of, kind of an impractical argument, even though the court told us to go through it, because they don't want to be there, because there's no, they're not, they're not going to sell any advertisements on, you know, I can't think of the name of street around here.
On Delrode, they have bus stops on Delrode.
Yeah, you know, someplace that, you're not going to sell one of those big boards on one of these, on one of these back streets.
Well, Manoa Shopping Center might have a 50-square-foot billboard in its parking lot for its captive audience of 200 cars, anytime there happen to be 200 cars in that parking lot. People aren't driving down a road and reading that sign, but advertising isn't just for people driving cars.
Right.
55, you know, billboards that are 55 feet up in the air and 672 square feet are designed to be seen from far away, and, you know, big bright letters, and, you know, as you said, on a limited-access road where somebody has a chance to take it all in and not have a surprise in front of them while they're driving. But, but advertising is a lot more than 682-square-foot billboards on highways. It's every sign that is erected by anybody.
We do not need a lot of distraction at Westchester Pike and Glendale, one of the most dangerous intersections probably in the township.
Anybody who tries to put anything there is going to have to get past that safety, health, safety barrier.
But it's a real issue. You stand there and watch people cross the street.
But what's the problem with a sign in the back of the Manoa Shopping Center?
There are handicap people that use that.
What's the problem with the back of a, with a sign in the back of a Manoa Shopping Center?
Give me a second, give me a second. Go ahead, finish.
I just, what's the problem with a, with a sign in the back of Manoa Shopping Center?
Why are we allowing it?
Briarwood.
Why are we going to add that in there?
Briarwood.
We're not just shutting out advertising.
We have, we provide, we provide advertisers. This is in the township.
We always have.
But we have to meet, and I think this one line on page 22 of the Commonwealth Court decision is, is the key to what we have to do right now. Haverford did not prove a substantial relationship between the exclusion meaning of billboards and the public health, safety, morality, or general welfare. What this board has to do in order to have the ability to challenge, to sustain a finding of excluding billboards is to prove that relationship in our ordinance. And if we, and that, I mean, I don't have to say anymore, that's what the court said, that, to me, that's clearly the line, that, I don't know if you'll agree, but.
No, no, and, and I can tell you that the question came up in a couple of the different cases, and really what, what the question was, was, well, what about every street in the town? And the, and the answer that we were giving at the time in round one of Springfield and round one of Haverford was, well, they brought these challenges, and you got to know, you got to have it in context, that when they brought these challenges, they brought them not only as challenges to the zoning ordinance, but also as variance requests. And they said, they came into us saying, this, this is what we want, and that was what we addressed on the, for the most part. And we said to the court that they brought the fight, this is what the fight was, they told us everything else wasn't safe, and the court said, well, we think you still have the burden to show. So, then we went into round two of billboards, and in round two of billboards in both towns, we went painstakingly through every street, and then, and you could have the people who were sitting there watching it in the zoning hearing board telling you how painstaking it was to sit and say, or the police officers to say, yes, we drove every street in Haverford, and the planner to say, yes, we drove every street in Haverford, and there's no place for these signs. So, I think you're right. I mean, I think we're, I think we're saying the same thing. I think what, I think what the court directed us to do in that opinion was to show, show why we're doing what we're doing. So, I think if we try and fix the ordinance to the extent that we take what I think we all agree is a general provision in the general code, put it into the zoning code where it's probably more appropriate with respect to the transit signs, and then for the rest of the areas, give some justification, or give some, some substantial justification for it by way of findings, as suggested, then I think we're going to be in a much, in a much better spot, is where I think we're going to be.
Okay. Well, it just got quiet.
I said I had a second.
Okay, so.
I, you know, I, again, just am asking, you know, if we pass this as it is here tonight with the understanding of what Commissioner Holmes said, that there can be changes made, how, you know, how broad can they, they have to be exactly what you just spoke about, correct?
Well, they can't delete any rights anybody has in here now.
Right.
And can't add anything that's, that a, that a citizen would say, hey, that wasn't in the first, that wasn't in the first ordinance.
Right.
It has to clarify. Any changes that get made between the first and the second have to clarify basically what the first one did.
Right, but we can, we can, we can add, we can add the things that we're all talking about here tonight, because tonight's the, tonight's the introduction of the ordinance.
Okay.
So, what happens after tonight is we take everything that you folks tell us here, and you basically say, Jim and Lori, go, go, go make this ordinance.
Go back.
Work, and then it will be advertised.
Right.
For next month, and that'll be the second reading.
Right, so I understand that.
So, that's when we really can't change anything.
Right.
Tonight, we can move some things.
Right, I get that. I'm just concerned, if we move things in, can we move things out?
You can always change the ordinance.
Okay, all right.
Right, at worst, it just becomes a new first ordinance.
Thinking what Mario suggested, are you doing that, Mario? Are we, you, your suggestion?
Right now, right now, it's not. Right now, what's on the floor is, is this ordinance.
With changes.
With.
With the legislative findings of that, that there's no billboards 55 feet high, 672 square feet allowable anywhere in the township.
Mm-hmm.
And with the accompanying, you know, health, safety, and welfare findings, and with the expert testimony that we developed.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question, okay? This board has an obligation to get every ordinance that we pass correct, so why can't we have a special meeting if we have to?
We can have a special meeting.
I'm willing to do it, I'm willing to come back here in a special meeting, then to pass something tonight like this, when we're, when we have at least four or five of us saying almost the same thing, some different, some want certain things, it's, how can we pass an ordinance like this?
The only push we have is we're up against this.
Right, exactly.
We do have a. I'm willing to have a special meeting.
Well, I mean, we could do this in June, right?
No, that would be too late.
It has to be passed in June, so we have, do you remember the date, Lori? Is it the 5th or the 6th, or something like that, right?
It's early June, and our meeting isn't until the 9th.
By our first, it's by our first.
Work session.
Yeah, in June, yeah.
Which I believe is the second.
The work session is the first.
We would have to have a special meeting before June.
At the 9th.
Yeah.
If you were going to.
I'm willing to do that.
Well, it depends on what you want to do. I mean, wait a minute, you could.
What are the ramifications of not having something done by this time period?
The ramifications would be that you probably have no ordinance then.
Correct.
And, and, I mean, I guess.
How did this get that bad?
That's a hard question. If you read what the, if you read what the curative amendment section says, it says that you have six months to study your ordinance to, to change it or to reaffirm it. Now, I represented Abington in the case, where they found their ordinance to be unconstitutional, they, meaning the board, and then came back and said, no, after we studied this, we think our ordinance is fine the way it is, and reaffirmed it, and, and we were affirmed by the Commonwealth Court in that case. In this case, the court has already told us to take a look at the ordinance, so I think I probably would be a little bit leery on just saying, we reaffirm it the way it is. I think that at the very least, we should move the transit and those type signs into our ordinance, so that there is now some outdoor advertising in the zoning ordinance.
And provided we act today, we can then do anything next month.
Make a motion.
Or the month after. We act today, we save our ordinance, and whatever reconfigured thing we make.
You act today, I'm going, if you act today, then we'll, we'll, whatever you act, whatever you do today, we're going to finish up the ordinance, advertise it, and be back here in June, and then you're going to have to act on what, if it's the last day, you're going to have to act, you're going to be satisfied with what we want, I mean, what you have, because we're not going to have time to redo it again in June.
But we have time to redo it again in July.
Yeah, well, but what we cannot do is reaffirm, I just pulled the municipal planning.
What's that?
What we can't do under the code is, if we do not pass a curative amendment, then we cannot reaffirm the validity of the zoning ordinance.
We do not.
We cannot reaffirm the validity of the zoning ordinance according to the municipal planning code if we don't do a curative amendment.
Oh, yes, you can. I'm absolutely certain of that.
I'm just looking at the section.
I've litigated that in the Commonwealth Court. You absolutely can.
It's 60924.
And it says reaffirm.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
It's June 1st as a meeting.
Let me, right, make, let me, let me make a recommendation.
Hold on, go ahead.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Dan.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to make a motion that we make, we move all transit signs into this P 11, 2015, and make that.
P eleven two thousand and fifteen and make that.
Oh, I have a motion on the floor.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Do you want to amend that motion?
I want to amend that motion. I'm sorry.
And that is to remove any of the signs out of C one and C five?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is that all right with you?
Concerned about that.
I'll upset you.
And, and put the tran, and put the transit in, in place of that?
Right. And move it into one eighty-two.
Move it into it.
So that we do have something.
And we have something.
For advertising.
That we can live with. Right.
And add the findings. Definitely.
So I made a motion to amend it. Do I have a second? Do we have a second?
Wait a second. Just...
Okay. All right.
Let, let the discussion finish over here.
I got it. Okay. No problem.
Yeah, I, um...
We could do Jeopardy music if you'd like.
I'm just, I'm debating this, Commissioner D'Amelio. I'm trying to, nobody's gonna rush out and build these signs and start selling space at C one or C five. I, I, I would prefer...
I don't agree.
I'm concerned about...
Run out.
I'm concerned about losing our health, safety, and welfare argument on the big billboards if we're over-inclusive and say that every single anything twenty-five square feet or bigger is a danger. I, I, I think we lose our credibility on that. And, and you've made clear that you don't, it's, for you, it's not about danger, it's about life.
Oh, I say that. I never said that.
In these smaller signs.
I'm, I'm sorry. Jim, do you believe that? Do you believe that, that that is the case? That if we, if we do not allow these monument signs and, and, you know, we restrict them just to the, to the train stops and the, and the thing, and we move over, we move one fifty-four over into one eighty-two, is that going to be an issue? Is that gonna cause, cause the, the argument of, of health, safety, and welfare?
You know, I, I guess I, I'm a little reluctant to comment. I mean, my, my thoughts are, my argument has been from day one, that these things are not safe, not only from a distraction point of view, not only from a reading point of view, but you also have all the other arguments that went along with it. I mean, with monument, you don't have to worry so much about it falling down. But there are other things, like, we, we've talked about distraction, and we've talked about, and we've talked about falling, and we've talked about items falling from it. But there was also a good deal of testimony about vandalism and those types of things that also occur on these different billboards. So I, I'm not real comfortable in just answering whether I, whether I think that, whether I think we would, our, our public health, safety, and welfare argument would be lessened. I mean, I, I think when you look at everything, if you, if you look at everything together, the, the aesthetics, the public health, safety, welfare, the constitutional provisions to, to provide, to preserve the, the aesthetic and environmental concerns and historical concerns, that we have a real good argument. And I, and I like our argument. And I think that we've proven it a couple times on these major roadways. I think what the court said to us is that on some of these smaller roadways, how do they know? Because, you know, if you, if you think about it, the court itself is just looking at the record, they don't know what Haverford Township looks like. They don't know that there's only two or three roads in Haverford Township that any billboard company is really interested in. So the court was saying to us, go back and show us that you can't do it anywhere. I don't think that the idea of being less than, than fifty-five feet and six hundred and seventy-two feet proving that they're unsafe is too hard, especially with this one applicant, because he's already said it. He's already told us. We can't, you can't build them that size because they're not safe. They gotta be bigger. So that, I'm rambling a little bit, but that's, that's my thoughts.
My, my point is...
All right. I'll accept the amendment.
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Would the square footage of shelter signs be limited to the current shelter dimensions in terms of transit?
They're not right now, right, Lori? We don't have a, we don't have a...
We're not, we would have to add that.
Right.
I mean, and if you want to do that, I think you have to say that now.
Right.
And say it now?
Right.
Okay. So, so if we're going to, right, because you, you do have different sized platforms in different dimensions of shelters. So we'd want to put something like that in as well. Square footage of the shelter signs is limited.
Might I suggest that we focus on this? We've talked about a lot in, in the past publicly about revising all of our sign ordinances. And, and so that they are, are better in general. Rather than trying to, you know, shoehorn everything into this discussion tonight, why don't we address what we have to address now and defer all those other discussions for another time when we can think about them rather than try to make everything fit tonight? I just don't think it makes any sense. We have a motion, and we have a second by Larry, right? Didn't you accept that? Second by Bill.
Right. Which is this ordinance stripped of everything except the, switching everything of one fifty-four into one eighty-two.
Correct.
And adding findings of the township.
Right. Okay, so he accepts that, that change. Bill, you'd have to, you seconded it, so do you accept it?
Oh, Bill, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, go ahead, Jim.
No, that's...
No, you're good? Okay, so that's the motion on the floor.
Call the roll.
Call it.
Call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Reluctantly, yes, at this point.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes. Okey-dokey. Number thirteen, contract awards.
Chairman, make a... Following contractors for the community development block grant and home programs in accordance with the published request for proposals and the subsequent evaluations for the period two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and twenty-one. Public improvements, Panoni Associates Incorporated. Two, Streets, Panoni Associates Incorporated. Three, Rehabilitation Technical, Panoni Associates.
Wait a second. Hold on. You gotta stay. You gotta stay. I'm sorry, Bill.
Incorporated as the primary provider. Four, Lead Testing, Leadco Environmental Incorporated as the primary provider. Five, Appraisals None. Six, Title Services, Philly Subsearches.
Second.
Uh, could I just, uh...
Go ahead.
Oh, Jim's not here. Oh, Larry, you can probably answer this for me. Can you just explain this to me a little bit? So why wouldn't, appraisal's none? That's where I'm just, I have a question. They're just not brought into this particular...
Yeah, we act, very, very rarely do we do appraisals anyway. So if we had to, we can actually just hire firm.
You can. Okay. So you don't have to bring anybody? You just do it kind of as needed? Let's put it that way.
As needed.
Okay.
I can tell you, in this, the eight years I've been here, it's never been done.
Okay, good.
For this program.
Thanks. I was just interested. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, to vote.
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay.
All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio is not here. Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes. Next, Public Works Department?
I'd like this from Mr. Holmes. Motion to award the emergency road repairs to Highland Avenue Contract to Charleston Paving and Excavating Incorporated to Vault, Pennsylvania, in the amount of fifty-one thousand and fifty dollars, submitting the lowest responsible quote.
Second.
Question made and seconded. Any discussion? We talked about this during the...
Repairs are needed.
Yeah, the repairs are...
Severely needed.
Needed.
Really needed. I know.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So please call the roll.
Doc said this is something that we can't turn down.
Uh, Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Wexler? And, uh...
Mr. Oliva?
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Traffic Signal Maintenance?
Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract Motion to Award the two thousand and fifteen Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract Number T six to Signal Service Incorporated, Westchester, PA, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, submitting the lowest responsible bid contingent upon their execution of the contract and supply of the required bonds and insurance.
Second.
Question made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Epstein.
Now, Mr. Wexler?
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes. All right. We already did the continuation of the citizens' forum in the beginning. Uh, new business?
New business, Mario. Okay. I have this letter about the EPA site. In December, a neighbor called the EPA about odors from the site. And because there was no digging underway and no oil seen in the soils, the EPA left cards with a couple of my Washington, Matt Washington Avenue neighbors and asked them to call if there was any further problems. Recently, the EPA was again contacted, and they contacted the property owner to meet at the site and get permission to sample the soil. Mr. Rich Rupert of the EPA called the township and advised us that there were some soil seen floating on top of the water in the foundation that was being dug. He told township officials that the developer was cooperating with the EPA. He also told, told the township officials that he felt the cleanup of the soil would be accomplished quickly. Mr. Rupert also said that this area where a trawl trestle was located until recently probably hadn't been studied, and with the excavation of the foundation, the oil was uncovered. Mr. Rupert said the primary results of this soil test found no contaminants related to the PCP Superfund Site. He estimated that less than a quart of oil was found, and it should be sample, simple to address the problem by installing a French drain around the foundation and running the water through and oil-water separator before the groundwater were discharged into the stream. The township noted that most of the site had been studied over many years, and any soils that were found to be contaminated were removed from the site years ago, and clean fill was brought in. Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection cleared the site for reuse in two thousand and two and noted that any environmental issues encountered during construction be addressed in the appropriate manner. In two thousand and twelve, they reviewed, EPA reviewed the files for any problems regarding the development of the site and stated that, at that time, there was no ongoing threat to human health or the environment. Mr. Rupert called Lori Hindenwood up last Friday advising her that they received a report of a fish kill at the site and asked township to send an inspector to verify it. When Joe Sealy visited the property, he found dead fish upstream of the Harvard Road Site near Rittenhouse. He also found white bubbles on the stream near Rittenhouse. No dead fish were found at the downstream of the Harvard Road Site. Mr. Rupert told the township that someone may have been washing a car and discharged the soapy water into the stream, killing the fish. I wanted to bring this up. This is the findings of what was going on with the EPA.
Okay. Uh, any other new business?
One piece, I don't know that we call it new business, but we, there's been an issue about properties and signs on private property for which I have received, you know, umpteen number of complaints, phone calls, emails. I know the township has. We've addressed it both with Mr. Byrne and Ms. Whitup. And I'd like them to explain to the public what we can and cannot do with regard to private property and political or other types of signs, and what the township has particularly done in the circumstances where we've had the complaints on this. So I don't know. Yeah, I don't... I, I, I don't care, but I just, I, I, it's important enough, and, and, you know, we, we, we're getting the complaints from all over the township.
Right.
Um, you know, it's, it's right at the intersection of sort of my ward, Commissioner McGarrett's ward, Commissioner D'Amelio's ward. But it's, it's, it's seen, and I, you know, I don't want the perception that the township is either doing nothing, we're, we're doing what we can, but we have constraints. This is a different type of constitutional issue.
Right.
But...
You bring up a good point. I'd like the solicitor, actually.
Okay, so there, so there, so I, I do understand what you're saying, and I do know, I know that you have called me several times to make sure that we're doing everything we can. You know, there are, with signs, First Amendment protections. And, and, you know, like it or not, you know, sometimes we get back to the issue of, the one lady brought up tonight about what's said on the buses. I mean, we may not, we may not like what's said on the buses, but, you know, we've got to appreciate the fact that, that it can be said in this country. That's the one thing that we really have to balance here. And, and your First Amendment rights, especially when it comes to political type issues, are really the, probably the highest protected rights that a person can have in this country. And, and they're very difficult to take away those rights. On the other hand, when you get into the, you get into signs that are, the commercial speech, they're a little bit less protected. And that's where you get into billboard type issues. And, you know, what kind of signs can you have? And you can limit the, the size, the type, you know, or prohibit them only if it's a, you know, there's a, as we talked about earlier, a, a real connection, a real nexus between the public health, safety, and welfare and the ordinance that we have prohibiting them. So, you know, somewhere, sometimes people will put things on their front lawns or on their property that are personal to them, that really are not affecting the public health, safety, and welfare, and more, are more protected as a first, as a private First Amendment issue than a commercial issue. And that's very difficult to regulate. Sometimes, though, the same type of people might go a little too far and, and construct a sign or some other type of thing that then starts getting into the realm of commercial, and then starts getting into signs that can be regulated. And when that happens, we do go out. I know that Lori and her, her, her departments and, and Joan and their departments and Joe Joe, uh, and his departments all, uh, spend a lot of time going out trying to make sure that we don't have signs that shouldn't be there. Uh, the process that occurs is when there is a sign that shouldn't be there, they would get a notice of a zoning violation and they have a period of time to cure that violation by taking it down. And if they don't take it down, then they can be fined, um, on a per diem basis. And as I understand it, that's, there's one particular site I know that there's been some complaints about and it's got a little of each on it, from what I understand. There's a, there are some private, um, First Amendment protected, uh, signs or, or, uh, statutes or whatever you might call them on that, on that property. And then there are, there's also a bigger sign which, um, really is probably less protected by First Amendment rights as it is a commercial sign, maybe publicizing some, um, type of activity which, um, is prohibited by our zoning ordinance. And I know that a notice of violation went out with respect to that sign. So, but I think that's about as clear as I can, I can make it. I'm, I don't know, probably clear as mud, but I give my best.
You satisfied with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know, I don't, I.
I could, I would only add that, um, with our first complaint about, um, the particular display, um, that has generated a lot of commentary, we only took enforcement on the visibility at the intersection. We didn't go after, uh, sign provisions at all and we looked at, uh, what constituted a safety concern and enforced that.
Okay.
Lori's team does a great job.
One of the things, one of the things on a.
Larry does too. He sees signs, I'm sorry.
Sometimes on a display like that too, like you think about it, if it, you know, if it, if the display was something other than what it is, you know, so you're getting into the content, like if it was a, if, if the same person had a hundred American flags on his front lawn, um, as long as they weren't bothering any health, safety or welfare, it'd be kind of difficult to go out and stop it. Um, so just because it's something maybe we don't like from a personal standpoint, they still have the right to say it in this country.
I agree.
Okay. Any other new business?
I just want to.
Okay.
And for the sake of sort of clarification, I actually just went back, um, because we had, we had so many discussions dealing with the Y and things. The initial vote, because I know Commissioner D'Amelio mentioned it and others, the initial vote in November 2008, which was my first meeting, uh, when I was sworn in, the board approved the condemnation of the Y property seven to two, and I'm looking at the minutes, Commissioners D'Amelio and Broido voted no. The second reading of that was actually approved in December of 2008 by a nine to nothing vote. The YMCA lease agreement was approved by an eight to one vote in March 2010 with Commissioner D'Amelio voting no. And the second reading of that was approved, actually seven, with Commissioner Holmes abstain, absent and Commissioner D'Amelio abstaining. Um, so just to clarify that.
Okay. Any other new business?
Yep. New business.
Go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Siegel and I had a constituent meeting with the YMCA. And I think what came out of that, uh, was that the YMCA, we probably should be meeting with them on a regular basis until we figure out some things that have, some ruffles that have come forth in the last year since they opened. And as much as we've all discussed this, you know, endlessly about the membership and the size of the membership, I think that my impression, and I think Commissioner Siegel would agree, that they have been a little caught off guard by the size of the membership. And I think I would ask this board that if we could have a meeting with the YMCA or have them come to us and give us an overview and maybe come up with something, you know what, when problems are new and you're not ready for them, sometimes they're not that easy to tackle. And I, they keep saying that, you know, it's never been our policy to cap the membership, but the fact of the matter is if you have a huge problem of something that's exploding and you're not really sure where to go with it, it needs to be addressed. So, I would like to say to the board that if the Y, if we could ask them to come before us, come up with an idea, give us an overview as a board so we can really look at this because the residents, it was very, they were very, very upset. And I know that all of us have been dealing with traffic and parking and all the things that come with it and all, we love the Y, we think it's great, we're thrilled that they're here, but we have some issues that we need to, like any new business, that we have to work through. So.
Okay. So, are you.
I would ask.
Ask Lori to, to get in touch with the Y and have them come to our next meeting?
Well, I, I think that Lori and I had discussed that briefly with Commissioner Siegel after the meeting, but I think if we could get something on the schedule so that we could have an open conversation with them and maybe address some very specific problems going forward.
Sure, we can do that.
Can I ask, to what goal?
Well, the goal, that's, the, the Y brought four different representatives plus their traffic engineer. Um, and the three of us were, were present at the meeting and a large, a decent number of residents and the, the, the meeting was actually filmed and has been shown, I know up till today at least, on the Township Channel, you'll see. I think the Y was surprised at some of the issues that, that they had engendered. Um, and they really needed the dialogue in order to learn what was going on and they want to do the right thing. How they deal with their membership, I don't know that there is a right thing to do, but there are parking issues, there are issues dealing with neighbor adjoining properties, and that dialogue had not really occurred until our meeting. So, having the Y with us on a regular basis, since, you know, they are a major presence, can only help.
Uh, I, I'm, yeah, and I, I, I apologize for the tone of my question. I just want to make really sure we as a township are not flirting with the notion of telling one of our businesses in this town where they have to cut off memberships or when they have to shut their doors or stop and, you know, inviting people in.
No, I don't think, that's, that's not it.
Because that has been the mistaken belief of some people in this town and some people on this board that somehow we as a, as a township should tell these people, you have to cap memberships at a certain amount. It'd be the equivalent of telling the Super Fresh, it's, it's too successful and they have to start turning away shoppers.
No, no, and, and I've heard you say that before, Commissioner Holmes, and I appreciate it and, and respect your opinion, but I think that when you have a business that's exploding like this and, and it's directly affecting, there, there are many issues that were there, not just the parking and the membership, but other things, you know, with traffic and lighting and, and all those things. I think that we really need to have an open dialogue with this entire board. Commissioner D'Amelio was there as well.
It is terrific that the YMCA recognizes the impact it's having in the area and that it's, it's going to take steps, but I just, we have to be very careful as a board not to start, you know, throwing around threats of or saying we're going to, you know.
No threat here at all.
No, absolutely not.
It's not.
There were residents who, who, who asked or sort of demanded that, but that's not, but I, I don't, that one, that the Y isn't going to do it. Two, I don't think it's anyone's role to tell them how to operate their business, but it is our obligation.
Right, other than how its operation affects the people in the township.
Right. I mean, we had businesses who had no parking because of it. We have neighbors who were impacted because of people coming in at 5:00 AM and the car lights and the, you know, the beeping. There, there were issues that I don't think the Y was fully appreciative of and if we can educate them, you know, I truly believe they want to be good citizens.
I can't think of another Y that is, was, is that embedded into a neighborhood. I mean, the Ardmore Y was on Montgomery Avenue. The Upper Darby Y is on, is on Lansdowne, you know what I mean? Has its own large parking lot and has nothing around it. The Gran, the one out at 202 and 1.
Rocky Run.
Has, yeah, Rocky Run has, you know, you could shoot a rifle in any direction, you're not going to hit anything.
But that's why it's a good reason to have them come because it is embedded in there.
It's terrific to have them come. I just, I just, I have to push back every time I hear about people talking about the Y that's got to limit its membership and everything. I just want to make sure the public understand the township is a business doing.
I just think you have to look at something when, you know, their problems are, have arisen and it, it continues to be that way and they did seem somewhat surprised when the residents were here. And I think it's time, you know, it's time for us to look at it too and have an open dialogue with them. That's all.
I think a suggestion, you made a great first step by having a public meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I think as a large employer, they need to have bi-monthly meetings with the residents, not us.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the feedback is coming from them.
Oh, that's a good idea.
We can offer them a facility, they can use the C-Rack, they can.
It's a good idea.
They could use this facility, but I, I particularly don't really, I don't think it's appropriate that on our voting meetings or our public, or our work session that we bring in a bunch of residents and one of the businesses to have a business, what essentially is a business operation or, or informative meeting.
Right.
Both ways to find out information about how to better run their business.
But that's why we tried it first as, as a joint meeting and I think it was.
It's a great first step, but I think it's.
It was much more effective.
That's their responsibility to open up the dialogue with the neighborhood, not, not our.
But doesn't it, doesn't it end up falling on our lap anyway? Because if you have parking and you have traffic issues and you have.
Well, I think you run the, you run that slippery slope of if it's on our test, then you run the risk of telling somebody, are you willing to tell the Super Fresh and Manoa Shopping Center how to run their businesses? Let them figure it out. If they're operating within the guidelines of our rules, regulations and laws, you know, we have to at least be a stone's throw away. We have to.
You know, the, it was a very productive meeting and the, and the way they ran it was very productive. And I think the Y has, has to understand that they, you know, it, it is great that they're here, but the impact it has on that community, which is what these two commissioners were trying to say, and, and the residents, the residents were talking to them about what's going on in their streets surrounding that.
I, I totally agree. They opened up the dialogue.
But it doesn't mean we shouldn't.
It's up to them to keep it going.
We shouldn't continue it and have them come here, at least, we don't have to come every work session, but they could come.
No, but.
They could come here.
Yeah, but I think, I think they could come here and, and answer our questions.
Right.
Yeah. I think they all have questions.
Not make it like a, a public meeting where, I mean, obviously would be a public meeting, but that we would be directing questions to them.
All right, but we've got to be careful. What Commissioner Wexler is saying is that we don't own this problem. It's the Y's. It's a business in this town that has a 20-year lease and is operating and we have to be very careful not to take ownership of their problems. We can guide things, we can mediate disputes, but it's not ours.
I, I.
Be careful not to own it.
I agree.
I have to disagree. You don't get the feedback.
Right.
That we do.
It's ours.
It's significant.
It is ours.
It's a major issue that impacts all of the people around there, um, in very different ways and some that I didn't know about until that meeting. I was, you know, my eyes were opened on some issues because.
Is it, is it stuff that we're going to have to legislate? That's my real question.
Parking could be, and then there are some other issues, but.
And they're taking steps to find more parking. That's.
Dealing with parking.
Is that our job to go find more parking for their operation?
No.
I don't believe it is, but.
No, but we, we came before those two homes that we, we.
They bought the two homes, we didn't buy them.
I know, but we approved it in the zoning.
Right. They make application, the zoning board does.
Right, we could have said no.
I, I, we're not the zoning board, so I don't know what we could have.
Well, I don't know if the zoning did, we did, didn't we vote for that?
Yep.
Say it again?
If, we, we voted to approve that.
It, it comes before.
Zoning board's recommendation.
Right. Yeah, we didn't make the decision.
We could have said no.
Right. But are you going to, we're not legislating other stuff. That's, that emanated from them, not us down. That's, that's my concern, that's, that's all.
But there is some resident parking that's been implemented on Hillcrest relating to it and there have been parking enforcement issues that the police then were aware of and had to, to, to deal with.
I mean, they've got a huge public relations issue, I agree.
They do, and I, I mean, I've had to change the parking on Belvedere and Ralston three times now this year, you know? So, there are issues and, and I agree, we certainly don't want to try to, it is a business and a business that should develop their own relationship, but I think that, you know, we, we should have an open dialogue with the YMCA and they should come and speak to us and, and then, you know, I feel like it will all settle down, but it, it needs to work out the kinks.
They're a little different than a business, okay? Because there, there are 501(c)(3) that is, is for the public good. So, it's not like Giant where their, their, their business where, you know.
Now, we're going to tell the churches what to do?
There is profit.
No, 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 I'm not saying that we're going to tell the churches what to do, but if, if the churches, if the, the people in, in the, you know, the parishioners are parking all over people's lawns, then we're going to, then we're going to have to do something about it. We're going to have to deal with it. We're going to have to deal with those issues.
We, we have laws against parking on public people's.
Yeah, I get you, Bill, but I'm just answering a question.
That's what I'm saying. Are, are there issues that we have?
We're, we're to have to deal with those issues.
Are there issues that we're going to have to initiate legislation to control?
Bill, Bill, on Maryland Avenue, when the church came there, all right?
Asking a question.
I'm going to answer it. When the church came there.
Yes or no?
The rest, the, the parishioners were parking in people's driveways. So, they called me and had to get the police to get involved and we had a dialogue with the church. The police came, very helpful. We talked to, to the, to the, um, where you go ahead of a church?
And Steve, I agree, but.
Freeze, they're not freezed. Pastor, talk to the pastor.
You have to have a community meeting that says, "Don't park in other people's driveways." That's like writing, "Don't," that, that's like writing "Open Other End" on the bottom of this.
No, no, no. And guess what, guess what, Larry? It worked. We went to the pastor, he talked to his parishioners.
It worked, it's just a pretty shocking, you had to do it.
Police had to do some enforcement, but it worked.
All right, I think we're.
And we did get, the government got involved.
I think, I agree, but it, it wasn't at a commissioner's meeting. I do that with the local businesses and churches in my area too.
Came before, some of the residents came before the board.
Jane, did you see what you started here?
Sorry. No, I, will there anything else come, Commissioner Wexler, before us? It may or may not, I don't know, but I think that we were, all three of us were kind of surprised.
I think it's a great first step. I think they, I think they have a huge public relations issue.
Yeah.
They need to be made aware, but they need to meet with the public.
Right.
And you facilitate, that's exactly what we do. That's what we do as our job as commissioners.
All right, let's move on to old business.
There's the, I, Commissioner Heilmann isn't here, but we had discussed before the meeting and at last meeting, his appointment to the Senior Citizen Advisory Council.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, sorry about that.
Um, which I don't, it wasn't on the agenda, but had been carried over and he was going to appoint Mary Ann Barson to the, as his representative to the Senior Citizen Advisory Council, so.
Okay.
I assume I can do that in his stead.
All right. And now we'll move on to old business.
Um, I had an other, other business before old business.
No, it's old, old business, right?
Other business.
It's other business, okay. It's, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this.
Others, not old.
Yeah.
All right, can I?
It's other business.
Jimmy's old, the rest of us.
Oh! Did Jimmy get to go first?
Yep.
I want to, uh.
One through nine, right?
Couple of things, I want to again congratulate Officer, uh, McGinn, McGinley?
McGibby.
Gimby. Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Okay. For Officer of the Year Award, I think it's great. Again, as I said earlier, uh, the police officers, the men and women that serve every day, um, the danger and sacrifice that they're up against, especially in today's world, it's enormous and it's very dangerous and I thank them for everything that they do. I wanted to bring up the Have a Good Times that came out recently. I, I think it's probably one of the best that I've seen in a while. If you're a resident in this township and you want to send your children to some of the playground programs, I suggest you look at this program. They have extended care programs, uh, which are just unbelievable. Um, I mean, you're, if your kid can't find something in this, um, pamphlet, then guess what, you're not looking hard enough. There's karate classes, there's all kind of, there's cooking classes, tours, trips, little chefs, I mean, you name it. This is one of the best, Tim, and I congratulate your staff for putting this together because it's.
Really nice.
It really gives our residents, who want to send their children to a camp, and thanks for doing the extended hours to, you know, I think that's a great program for working families, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Um, I also wanted to bring up, um, Mike Levin's comments, I think about Panini Associates. Um, I think it was sort of like not being transparent. Are you kidding me? One thing about Dave is he, Mr. Panini will come before this board and tell us exactly what he finds, whether we like it or not. He's, he's open and transparent and he, he puts it out there. We may not like it sometimes, but that's what he does. So, I take offense to any suggestion that it's not transparent. So, thanks for your, your work and, and I appreciate everything that you do. And that's it right now.
Okay. Commissioner Hall?
Uh, I'd like to, uh, last month I was remiss in not thanking Lori and her staff for doing such an outstanding job all the way through with all of the municipal building, the police building, the library, everything that went on. I know how tirelessly you worked and I really can't thank you enough. I, I know that we were set back a little bit and I've walked in your office many days and seen the, the piles of everything that's going on and you came together just with a stellar, stellar performance. Thank you so much on, from all of us. I know, we really appreciate it and we were able to vote for that architect in a nice, cohesive manner, which I think worked out really well. So, and thank you, Mr. Gentile, always. Really appreciate it.
Sure. Cirillo?
Yes, and so I would like to announce, uh, and invite the commissioners which you received and also residents, the commissioners received an invitation to the dedication of the Joe Cirillo Field on Saturday morning, this Saturday morning, May 16th, at 10:30 AM. Uh, we have a beautiful sign going up and a few little, uh, comments from the Cirillo family and from some of the commissioners. We'd love for you to be there, invite your residents and it shouldn't be probably about an hour or so, so if you could be there right at 10:30 on Saturday morning, that would be great. And thank you, Tim, for all your hard work on that, we appreciate it.
All right, I will be there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Siegel?
Uh, just a couple of things. Just one, one, I want to thank the people who came to the constituent meeting. It was probably the best attended meeting I've had, uh, since I became commissioner and it was a very good dialogue and I, I think it, you know, there's, it's a good idea that perhaps we should all consider combining our efforts on some of these meetings, uh, because it really did, uh, fill the room and it was a good dialogue and then the police and the township manager and all the, and assistant township manager don't have to attend quite as many and can answer the same types of questions. Uh, in a, other thing, two other things. In other thing, two other things, one, this Saturday, there'll be an electronics recycling event sponsored by Newtown Township, Marple Township, and Havreford Township, it'll be at Malon Road and West Chester Pike across from the Brumall Fire Company. This is basically anything with a plug except large appliances. The event runs from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and any items with data, it'll either be destroyed or wiped, and I believe, this is the only event that's scheduled this year, and this one just got scheduled, I actually found out from Commissioner Wexler about it, and it's, it's a very good opportunity to dispose of electronics, you can't throw them out, and you do not want to throw out any electronics that have any personal information on it, because it can be read very easily, and you could lose confidential information, and someone could be hacking into your accounts, so this is a very good opportunity. The other thing is that on Saturday at 8:00 in the morning is the Paddock Farms Neighborhood Yard Sale, and that'll be throughout the neighborhood. If people are interested, they can get more information at the Paddock Farms website, which is paddickfarmcivic.org, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I don't have anything other than to report, it's that time of the year for the St. Dennis Fair again, so everybody who can make it out and ride those scary, frightening 100-year-old rides, good luck, Godspeed, and between now and our next meeting, we will be recognizing Memorial Day, I know somebody else will give the details on that, but it's a time for us to think about everybody before us who fought for our country and for our freedoms, a lot of the freedoms we spoke about this very night, so that's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, Commissioner McGarrett?
Yes, the other day, Saturday, I was down the Havreford High School, and the, well, actually in Delaware County, the police, the different departments who have K9s were down there, and basically Havreford put on a good show, Doug Linker and the K9 with Jano placed first in best appreciation, Linker's Jano placed third in the main event, and Linker's Jano second place in the obstacle course, so Havreford did very well, it was-
Good job, guys.
Johnny Viola was there, and the chief was there, and he was there, and they spent the whole day there, I think it was, what, 10 to 4, wasn't it, John? 10 to 4. And basically, what Larry said about St. Dennis Fair, that's going to be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, four more days, I know I was there last Friday and Saturday, Friday was great for him, Saturday wasn't as good, but I think the weather got some people going to the shore. And again, Jane mentioned the Joe Cirillo dedication at 10:30 at Grassland. Sunday, don't forget, that's the big festival in Brookline from 12 to 7:00, and Tuesday is May 19, that's Election Day, and also Larry mentioned that the May 25th is the, not parade, but they basically have a ceremony down at the police station around the circle, so that, that's at 11:00 a.m., so, and that's what I have. So, I hope everybody can attend that, can, can come to that event at the police field, there'll be the Havreford High School band and some veterans, a lot of veterans will be there, so come out and honor your veterans, they fought for you, and you can come and honor them.
I'll follow up, I was asked by the police department to talk about Memorial Day. It's a day, as a veteran, it's a special day, we honor those members of the military that have given their life, and then also, there's also a very moving tribute, representatives of our police department, our fire departments, and our emergency medical services also remember any member that has passed away in the last year, as well as all the veterans groups in the township. It's a very moving event, it's a very emotional event, they always have a great speaker, and again, as Commissioner McGarrett said, it kicks off at 11:00 a.m. at Veteran Circle, right there by the, between the police department and the stadium. Second thing I have is the Hilltop Civic Association's meeting, which is my constituent meeting, is on May 28th at 7:30 p.m. at the Bon Air Fire Hall. Thank you.
All right, and I wanted to, I just wanted to remind everybody, the Heritage Festival is on June 7th, it's the 9th Annual Heritage Festival, and it starts at 11:00, runs till 4:00 p.m., and then the, the Spring Fest and Music Fest in, on Brookline Boulevard, and that is on Sunday, the 17th, from noon till 7:00, and I wanted to wish everyone a-
The June Commissioners Meeting is Tuesday.
Yeah, June, right, the June, what is it, Tuesday, the what?
Tuesday, I believe.
The 9th.
The 9th, because the graduation is on the 8th, so we'll be, we'll be moving that, and-
Mary, I'd like to recognize Larry and thank him, Commissioner Siegel alluded to it, the recycling event that we're having is his initiative with several other township managers adjacent to us, I don't know if people know, but Delaware County, the state changed the laws, and Delaware County canceled theirs. I had a rash of about 10 calls on Friday, on that Saturday night, about people went all the way down to Calcon Hook Road, which is way down Sharon Hill by the airport, and they were turned away because they didn't collect electronics. I sent Larry an email, I said, "He's already been working on it with the other township managers," so, so his initiative with Marple and Newtown Square, that we're doing this,